Good evening and welcome. El siguiente mensaje será en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear thirty minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be another and final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can stay and speak at the end. Participate in public comment, please raise your hand now by clicking on the participants button at the bottom of your screen by selecting Raise Your Hand. To comment by phone, you'll be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you wait to raise your hand until the public comment period starts, you will not get to speak and you'll have to wait until next public comment period. When called upon, you will be promoted to panelists. This means that you will appear on screen. If you do not wish to appear on camera, please be sure to disable your camera on your end. The board president will usually call on our students first. If you are a student who wishes to speak, please write student at the end of your name. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. On an individual basis, she also has a discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. When your time has elapsed, you will see Vice President Babbitt holding a sign letting you know you have fifteen seconds left. If you are still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you.
Voy a proporcionarles un resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de unos procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de veinte minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las diez, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar en comentario y parte de miembros de la audiencia que no tuvieron la oportunidad de proporcionar el comentario durante el periodo de comentario público. Para comentar por videoconferencia, a favor de levantar la mano ya haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo la pantalla y selecciona el botón Levantar la mano o Raise Your Hand para comentar por teléfono, levanta la mano presionando estrella nueve. A favor de hacerlo ya, ya que si se espera hasta el inicio del periodo de comentarios públicos, tendrá que esperar hasta el final de la reunión para participar. Usualmente, presidente, la presidente llamará a los estudiantes primero. La presidente de la mesa directiva operará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adopción especial. Al ser llamado, será promocionado a panelista y aparecerá en pantalla. Si no desea aparecer en pantalla, por favor de pagar su cámara. Cuando le faltan quince segundos, la vicepresidente le hará saber levantando un cartel. Si todavía está hablando cuando se acaba el tiempo, puede terminar su oración, pero por favor trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barrios. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December fifteenth meeting of the Berkeley School Board. As a reminder, this meeting will be recorded and will also be accessible online. Thank you so much, Ms. Barrios, for your introduction this evening. And I will now call the open session of tonight's meeting to order at seven oh four P M. And for the record, closed session began at six thirty-three P M. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll? Director Anjuna Mascareña Swan. Director Anna Vasudev.
Present it.
Director Sinai.
Here.
Vice Presi-- I'm sorry, Director Albert. His president Babbitt.
Here.
And President Brown. Present. Thank you so much. Now is the time to raise your hand if you would like to speak for public comment. Once, you can raise your hand by using the raise hand icon at the bottom panel on Zoom. And once we begin the public comment period, anyone who raises their hand after will only be permitted to speak at the second public comment opportunity, which is always held at the end of the meeting. As a reminder, if you are a student, please remember to put S or student behind your name so that you may be given priority to speak first. Based on how many people raised their hands, we will determine how much speaking time everyone has when we get to that time. In the meantime, we need to approve the agenda. Are there any requested changes or is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to the agenda.
It's been moved by Director Alper. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Director Sinai. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll for vote? Director Mascareña Swan.
Yes.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Albert.
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt.
Yes.
And President Brown.
Yes.
I also approve.
Director Sinai, my-- sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. The agenda for this evening's meeting has been approved. I will now ask our new vice president, Vice President Babbitt, to please report out from closed session.
Gladly. Thank you so much. Closed session began today at six thirty-three P M. All were present. And the motion was carried for item three point one by Director Alper. It was seconded by Director Vasudev, and the motion was approved unanimously. Five zero.
Thank you so much, Vice President Babbitt, for your report. We will now move on to public comment. Again, this is your last opportunity to raise your hand for public comment as when we start the public comment period. Anyone who raises their hand will only be permitted to speak at the second public comment opportunity at the end of the meeting. We have two hands for public comment, and each public commenter will be given three minutes to speak. So we will begin with Gladys Ocampo, followed by Zariel Rodriguez. Ms. Ocampo Stout?
Thank you, President Brown. Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Stevens. My name is Gladys Ocampo Stout, and I'm a parent of two children at Sylvia Mendez. And I'm here representing Latinos Unidos of Berkeley. I'm here to follow up on a statement I made on behalf of Latinos Unidos in the last school board meeting. The statement was made, the statement that was made was regarding the lack of outreach made to Latinx students in regards to the E L master plan, Gabe Present workshops, and Pique. After that discussions that was had by the board in the district regarding the level of participation of parents, Latinos Unidos is concerned that the board may see the lack of the parent participation as due to a lack of need. This is exactly what we were concerned about. We do not want these programs to be seen as ineffective simply because outreach was not done. Latinx students are grossly overrepresented in the overall student population that need remedial support. Some are English language learners, many are not. We make up twenty-three percent of the district, so the number in families and students that we have to participate in these programs is not the issue. We need these and many more services to bridge the achievement gap and see the Latinx resolution successfully implemented in B U S D. We also need the staffing to outreach so that these programs can be successful. What we as a district have had to offer our Black and Brown students has not worked, and we can see that reflected. And we must take advantage of the programs that have been hired to help work towards helping our students be successful. But please continue your efforts to authentically engage with your community. Passive emails will not work for E L families. We are very happy that the bilingual district staff position was not cut, and we look forward to this position helping with this outreach. We are also happy to work with the U S D to ensure better outreach to our Latinx families. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ocampo Stout, for your comments this evening and for being here for a very short board meeting. Ms. Rodriguez?
Hello, I'm Zara Rodriguez, currently vice chair of the Peace and Justice Commission. I was appointed by a B U S D student director back in twenty sixteen. Being appointed by B U S D student director has allowed me to serve as a commissioner for five years. Tonight, I'm speaking in regards to the letter my fellow B U S D appointees and I wrote to this board about why B U S D cannot remove B U S D appointments to the Peace and Justice Commission. I truly believe it brings diversity. Currently, our commission has four P O C women who are B U S D appointees that share similar backgrounds, yet also bring different life experiences and ideas to our commission. As a student director appointee, I think it's necessary to include students who are interested in being a part of their city's government. It builds skills and experience. Lastly, as Berkeley residents, we should not be stripped from the opportunity to be a part of our city's government. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Ms. Rodriguez, for your comments and for being here this evening. There aren't any more hands raised for public comment. And so now we have the opportunity to hear from our unions. But just before we do that, if there's anyone who came to speak this evening and did not get an opportunity to, you are more than welcome to email any comments or thoughts to all of us at boardofed@berkeley.net, or you can always contact us individually. All of our information is posted online. Now we will have the opportunity to hear from our unions. Are there any union comments this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to our district committee comments. Are there any district committee comments this evening? Seeing none, we will now move on to our board member comments. Director Sinai, would you mind starting this off if you have comments this evening?
I think you made me start last time.
I did? Okay.
No, that's okay.
Well, you know, I wanted you to start. Go ahead if you don't mind.
Thank you, President Brown. I appreciate it. I would just like to take a moment to appreciate all of our teachers and our staff and our administrators as we enter and our students and our families as we enter into the winter break and wish everybody a healthy and safe holiday period. Not everybody celebrates holidays during this time. If you do, I hope it's warm and loving, and if you don't, I hope you have a great relaxation and a great break. And also just want to remind us all that this is not always the best time of year for everybody. So please be supportive and empathetic to those that are around you. And if you need any kind of help, please make sure you call out for services and call out for mental health supports if you need it. We definitely have a very dominant culture, and we want to make sure that people have the space to get the services that they need. The only other thing I wanted to add, and I'm sorry, Dr. Stevens, I didn't I didn't kind of flag this for you ahead of time, but I don't know if there's any just kind of like update on just we're going to come back to school on January third with a vaccine mandate. And didn't know whether you were going to say in your comments, just a little update on kind of our preparation and that we're going to be ready for both the vaccines and the testing alternative. I don't know, maybe you could just touch on it a little bit when you come around here.
Yep, I'd be very happy.
That'd be great. And just wanted to remind folks that a lot is going on. I look forward to the new calendar year and, you know, to continue to prioritize and hone in on what's most important for our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Sinai. Student Director Mascareña Swan, would you like to go next?
I don't have any comments tonight, but I second everything Director Sinai said.
I think we all second everything Director Sinai said. Okay, let's go to Director Vasudev. Would you like to go next?
Thank you, President Brown. I also echo everything that Director Sinai said. Thank you all for coming to give public comment tonight. I appreciate hearing from all our speakers, especially Ms. Ocampo Stout, about the need for robust culturally responsive engagement to our Latinx families, about all the various wonderful interventions that we have funded as a district. So thank you, Ms. Stout, for those comments. I wanted to also thank our teachers and students for completing the fall semester. I'm very proud of our work as a district too, and I want to give a big shout out to our staff for making sure that we worked really hard to keep our students in school safely this semester. I know that, you know, through my public health work, not every district was able to implement modified quarantine. And I'm really proud that our district did do that. And so I know that took a lot of effort to make sure that we had a robust testing program. And I'm really appreciative of our parents too for having a high consent rate and making sure that our students could participate in that program. I know that many families and students and staff are looking forward to a couple of days of rest and recovery for the holidays. So I want to thank also our P T As because I know that you're working really hard this week to celebrate our education workers and for all the different room parents that are out there organizing different, you know, different ways to celebrate our teachers. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing because I think that's really important to do to acknowledge our staff for all their hard work. I also had the pleasure of attending Cragmont Elementary's Winter Fest this weekend, which was a lot of fun. It was great to see our principal there fully decked out in a Santa outfit that was also Cal-inspired. And so I'd never seen something like that before, but it was great to be with our teachers, with our families, and to try to, you know, how do we host school events and, you know, in the era of a pandemic? And so it was nice to be at Grove Park in South Berkeley with our families and to be accessible to our most vulnerable families. So thank you to all the, all the different P T members that organized that. And although we're all looking forward to some rest and recovery, I am too. I wanted to let you all know that I will also be using the next couple of days to meet with state leaders to continue to advocate for better funding for our schools in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. So this work doesn't stop in between board meetings. We also, you know, wear hats as, you know, state advocates for better funding for public schools. So tomorrow, I'm convening a group of school board directors and Senator Richard Pan to advocate for legislation to continue to fund important COVID-related expenses for the upcoming school year. So I want to give a shout out also to Director Albert for joining in those discussions and also to our superintendent for sharing a list of what we see as projected expenses coming before our district in the upcoming school year. I think it's really important to remember that in between meetings and now, as, you know, state decision makers are getting together to think about what the education packet looks like for public schools, that we really, you know, all of us collectively, all of us school board directors and, you know, district staff, think about what kind of expenses we see coming because of the pandemic. You know, the impact of the pandemic will not disappear in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And although, you know, it really hurt to put that list of, you know, potential budget reductions, we know that we have to be strategic about how we fund our public schools in the future to avoid as many budget reductions as we can. So with that said, I also wanted to wish everyone just happy holidays. See you in January, and whether you celebrate or not, I do hope that people take some time for rest and recovery because it feels like we've been going full steam ahead, and I'm sure everybody needs it.
Thank you so much, Director Vasudev. I am also sure that everyone needs some rest. Director Albert, would you like to go next?
Yeah, thank you. Two things. One is I wanted to thank Director Vasudev for her leadership in what she just talked about, which is the advocacy at the state level for adequate funding for public schools, particularly around the, all the work we have to do related to COVID. And it's, it's, it's hard work and sort of herding cats. And, but she's managed to sort of put together a coalition of districts, of school board leaders in districts in Northern California. And I'm just sort of tagging along, but really appreciate her leadership. And as she said, also the superintendent's support in, you know, getting the lawmakers and policymakers the data that they need. So thank you, Director Vasudev. And I also wanted to thank our city partners for this mayor and the city council for approving just last night, yesterday afternoon, actually, twenty-four million dollars, I think Director Sinai, twenty-four million, right? From--
Twenty-four point five.
Twenty-four point five million dollars from the Measure O funds to support our educator housing project. This was the culmination of a ton of work by all sorts of people, including many members of the community, folks from Be Home, city partners, district staff, city staff, Director Sinai, who's been a board leader on this, our former colleague Josh Daniels. I'm sure a lot of other people I'm forgetting, but, but the, and of course, our union partners. And President Meyer and I were there at the city council meeting yesterday to thank the council and the mayor for the allocation of the funds. So we're really looking forward to seeing that project continue and working with the neighbors and all the members of the community to, to see educator housing actually become a reality in Berkeley in the next--
Thank you, Director Albert. Vice President Babbitt, would you like to go?
Wait, sorry, and John Calleste, Director of Facility John Calleste has been instrumental, of course, in that project. Sorry, Vice President Babbitt, I just forgot to mention John.
Can't forget that. That's important. Thank you so much. And I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and to congratulate all of our student performers for the various holiday performance that have happened throughout the district. Please know that the efforts you put in to do your best make us all very proud. I also want to congratulate all of our student activists, athletes, artists, leaders, or participants of clubs and those who work real paying jobs and those who feel like they should be paid for all of the help and support they provide within their homes. We recognize that your lives are full, and yet you still balance prioritizing your best for educational success. We are proud of you. To the greater community, I was at Target and I saw the book titled Nice Racism. I literally could not move for a second as the title alone reminded me of so many of my lived experiences. It is part two of Robin DiAngelo's bestseller, White Fragility. I want to thank all of those who have been actively engaging in this work, especially post the George Floyd murder, and encourage you to continue with this book if you haven't already. The cover quotes Beverly Tatum, author of Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria, saying, "If you want to get beyond feeling defensive and increase your capacity for effective anti-racist action, do yourself a favor and read this book." I see the need for everyone to read it as it helps even people of color give language to what we experience and what we may inadvertently continue as part of the culture in which we have all been raised. Lastly, for those concerned about the proposed budget reduction items, I want to let my board colleagues know that I'm looking forward to more workshops on all of these areas, special education, our business office and H R practices, which includes the Personnel Commission, Ed Services, and especially OFI or the Office of Family Engagement and Equity. Last year, this board made an intentional commitment, hearing the advocacy and seeing the need for a stronger OFI department. We did our part in allocating the funds, yet both leadership roles for the OFI department remain unfilled. Despite my request to provide our OFI liaisons with clear direction on who they report to, my understanding is no official guidance or direction has been provided this semester. It is extremely disappointing that those who were recognized as heroes in our community during this pandemic have once been elected to be eliminated versus expanded, even despite last week's presentations, which though clearly highlighted the gaps in our ability to serve our prioritized pupils. In budget priority two, we say budget priorities will be derived from L cap goals and actions which center on improved services to unduplicated students and other prioritized groups like students of African and Latinx descent and students with disabilities. Yet, if you looked at the suggested OFI cuts, that is exactly the group most impacted by these cuts. I fought for this department as a parent advocate and will continue to express the need for this department as a board member. Very early on, I made clear requests of the district leadership that we take the time to take a deep dive into this department, especially if restructuring would be necessary to better align our goals with our fiscal outlook. While that has not happened, I'm looking forward to scheduling that discussion in this new year. While we know all of these cuts will not be necessary, given the preliminary five point three five percent COLA projection, creating efficiencies to ensure we are spending public funds in the best ways possible, developing a strong infrastructure to support our community's shared values and budget principles will greatly help B U S D reach its mission of becoming a world-class district. Thank you to all of our B U S D stakeholders for continuing to support the B U S D community as we continue to strive to emerge stronger. Happy holidays and happy new year.
Thank you so much, Vice President Babbitt. I'll go ahead with my board member comments right now, and I would like to just first start off by appreciating our district faculty and staff for the work that you have done this year. Many educators across the country have identified this year as being one of the most challenging years in their career to date. And I know the same is true for our students and for our families. And so I, on behalf of the rest of the board, would like to give an appreciation to all of our B U S D stakeholders for the resilience, dedication, and commitment to excellence that has been displayed every year, but most specifically this year during such a challenging time. And so I am hoping that this break will give you rest and restoration so that we can come back in January and hit the ground hard and continue to commit to being dedicated and resilient educators and providing our students with the best education possible. As Director Albert mentioned earlier, I'd like to appreciate the Berkeley City Council for supporting Berkeley's educators by allocating Measure O funds for educator housing. This is major, especially in the midst of an ongoing housing crisis, both here in the Bay Area and nationally. My firm belief is that educators should not have to worry about where they are going to sleep at night. And thanks to our mayor, the Berkeley City Council, and our champion on the board, Director Sinai, educators in Berkeley will not have to worry about that. So thank you, Director Sinai, for your ongoing work on this. You have been committed to this with your boots on the ground in partnership with Director John Calleste. So thank you so much for bringing this to fruition and for making this opportunity possible for our educators here in Berkeley. Additionally, I would like to announce some amazing community engagement opportunities that will take place when we return back from the break. As you all know, we have approved the African-American Success Framework, which will serve as a three-year strategic plan with recommendations, action steps, and an implementation timeline. And so this is our opportunity for our community to get involved in this work. We will begin January community engagement meetings. The first one will be held on January thirteenth. It will be a virtual community learning session. And in this session, all are welcome to, of course, log on and share their experience here in B U S D as Black and African-American stakeholders. And we will use the information that is learned in that meeting to continue to build out the priorities for the African-American Success Framework. The second meeting will be held on January twenty-sixth. It will be an in-person community working session that will be held at the Oxford Theater. And the final meeting in January will be a January twenty-ninth in-person student and family-focused group. So you'll have the opportunity to join with College Bound and STEM Steps Partners as they dig a little bit deeper into the framework and refine it as well as its recommendations to better reflect the needs of students and families. So please be on the lookout for correspondence from the district this week and formally inviting you to save the date for those events, as well as formal invitations that will go out upon our return to campus. Additionally, I am so excited about our committees that we are going to approve this evening. Of course, we have our standard committees, but we have the addition of three new committees, the Equity and Excellence Committee, the Sexual Harassment and Gender Equity Committee, as well as the African-American Advisory Committee. As I spoke last week in my board member comments, I talked about my excitement for these committees that we are going to be able to approve just in a few moments. And I'm excited about the work that will be done to help us move as a district towards our true goal of equity and excellence and engagement. And so I am so thrilled that we are going to be able to have this opportunity and happy that my board directors are going to have the opportunity to vote on this publicly for all of those, all seven people out there watching tonight and those who will watch online tomorrow to see how we are committed to moving our district forward. So those are my comments this evening. I'm going to ask our superintendent, Superintendent Stevens, to please greet us and share his comments as well.
Thank you very much, President Brown. Like all of the members of the board, I just want to wish all of the Berkeley community, our staff, our students, and families very happy holidays. It's been, it's been a hard year for all of us. I think we all arrived at this moment of rest, I think, with a certain need to be with family, to be with friends, to sort of pull back, take stock, and recharge. So I hope all of that is true for every one of our families and staff members here in Berkeley. We have been very busy in preparation for our return to school in January with respect to sort of fighting off what we anticipate is going to be occurred, sorry, as an increase in COVID transmission. So a little bit of information for our families. So first, we have been particularly reaching out to families of children who are currently unvaccinated. We do have this information in the district. We've been developing a number of letters, and those letters have been going out weekly now for two weeks, specifically to families of unvaccinated students. Those letters both spell out the terms of the new January third policy for students who are twelve and older and then make available a range of resources that relate both to vaccination opportunities that we are hosting in concert-- that we are hosting in concert with the city of Berkeley, but as well information about how to register for weekly on-campus testing. That board policy for students twelve and older requires either that a student be vaccinated or take a COVID test on campus once per week. The very best way to get ahold of this information is on our website. We're maintaining up-to-date information about both testing and vaccine opportunities on our website, and that's very easily accessible from our homepage. We are making a number of vaccine clinics available. There is a clinic this Saturday taking place at Sylvia Mendez Elementary School. We blasted information out to the Berkeley High School and BTA communities today that there is still space to be vaccinated at Sylvia Mendez this Saturday. And then we're hosting clinics as well at Berkeley Adult School on Monday and Wednesday of this coming week. That is available both for staff who seek to get booster shots as well as families who may want to be vaccinated too. For families who have sought out vaccines and may need to update their information with the district, and we've got a simple way to do that. We've created a new email address. It's vax, V-A-X, at Berkeley dot net. That email goes straight to our team and we'll be able to take in your vaccine information, update our own records so that we can keep track of your child's vaccine status as it relates, as it relates to this policy. Also, as a precaution, we are right now in the process of distributing about thirteen thousand COVID test kits to all of our families and staff members. Now, we took possession of those kits last week. The high school received those kits today and will be distributing them across our elementary schools over the next few days. Instructions about when and how to use those test kits are forthcoming. We anticipate that those will be ready by tomorrow. They will be translated, and that will help people know when to use them at the end of the vacation, that final weekend, as well as what to do in the event that a test appears to be positive. Just a sort of a quick little preview, in our discussions even today with our city of Berkeley public health colleagues, they are sort of advising us to prepare for another surge. They do imagine that that surge may take place as soon as our return to school on January third. They do anticipate a period of time that's going to feel a lot like the Delta surge at the beginning of this year in terms of the number of cases. And so we just want the community to know we are well-prepared for this in terms of our contact tracing operations, our testing operations, as well as our vaccine opportunities. We'll continue to communicate more about the emerging conditions of COVID-19 as we know them. But we urge everybody to be safe, practice those health protocols as you travel or get together, and then know that a range of information is available through the school district on our website. So with that, President Brown, I'm going to turn it back to you. Appreciate the opportunity to offer that update.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Stevens. We have now reached the portion in our agenda where we need to approve the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Moved by Director Alper. Is there a second? There are three people who said, I'm going to give it to the student director. Second in by student director Mascherini Swann. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll? Student Director Mascherini Swann?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice President Babid?
Yes.
President Brown? Yes. The motion passes five to zero and the consent calendar is approved. We are now going to move on to our first action item for this evening. Item twelve point one, which is the approval of the 2022 Board Committee, School Board Committee assignments. Is there a motion to approve the committee assignments?
So moved.
Moved by Director Sinai. Is there a second?
Yes, I second.
Enthusiastically seconded by Vice President Babid. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll once more? Student Director Mascherini Swann?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes, enthusiastically so.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Is President Babid?
Yes.
President Brown? Yes, enthusiastically. Thank you, Ms. Barrios. We will now move on to item twelve point two, the approval of the ACOE required budget reductions for the 2022-2023 academic school year. And I will invite our superintendent, Superintendent Stevens, to please introduce this item again.
Thank you very much, President Brown. As I begin this item, I just want to offer thanks to the many folks who have contributed to the development of this preliminary list. That includes most Assistant Superintendent Pauline Follinsby. But we've also had significant input from members of the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee, the Parent Advisory Committee, the District English Learner Advisory Committee, as well as members of the board. What we have in this list is not a perfect reflection of, of both the information that we need to make informed decisions about budget reductions, nor is it a perfect reflection of a sort of fully considered process. Alameda County Office of Education is requiring of many districts that have experienced enrollment decline to submit a preliminary non-binding list of reductions by a December fifteenth deadline. That's today. They are doing that out of an abundance of caution about the impact of declining enrollment on revenue in their districts here in Alameda County. So we are complying with this by passing this list. But members of the community who have been following along should know that we're missing a lot of information still. We don't yet know what state revenue is going to look like for public schools next year, nor do we know what impact vaccines may have on enrollment at the elementary level. So we will stay engaged with our community as it relates to potential reductions. We do plan to just stay very public and transparent, both with the board and the community as we go through this process. And we'll begin what I consider to be the more traditional budgeting process as soon as we're back in January. So hopefully that sort of provides a little bit of context for members of the viewing public about what this list represents, and more importantly, what it's not. What it's not is a binding list of reductions. It's a preliminary list for the county.
Thank you so much. Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, do you have any follow-up that you need to share in regards to this item before we vote?
No, I really don't. It's pretty much the list that we shared with the, with the board last week. We've organized them in tiers. That's the only difference, which was a suggestion that ACOE gave us in terms of the presentation. But the items are the same. They're non-binding. But we're complying with Alameda County's Office of Ed's recommendation that we start, at least to start this discussion earlier rather than later.
Thank you so much, Assistant Superintendent Follinsby. With that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, approve the ACOE list of preliminary reductions today, December fifteenth, 2021.
I'm moved.
Been moved by Director Alper. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second in by Director Vasudev. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll? Student Director Mascherini Swann?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
So I, I will say yes, but I will echo the comments I made last week that I feel like there needs to be not just a lot of work, understanding that it's not binding, but there's such a significant percent of those cuts are coming for big systems change and program change and special ed that definitely want a lot of revisiting, not just of numbers, but of strategy. So I've talked to the superintendent about it, made it, you know, have been very clear about that. So with that caveat, I, I go yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice President Babid?
I echo Director Sinai's comments and I will abstain.
And President Brown? Yes. Thank you, Ms. Barrios. Before we move to the second opportunity for public comment, I'd like to take this opportunity to remind our board members to please take a look at the information items and, and the public to look at the information items that are at the end of the agenda and to please govern yourselves accordingly. Are there any people who are here for public comment, second opportunity for public comment? If so, you have the opportunity to please raise your hand now to address the board. Seeing no hands raised, I am excited to adjourn what I think is the shortest meeting in Berkeley Unified School District's school boards history. So with that being said, I think we're off to a great start. Let this president continue to roll on now. The meeting is adjourned and good night, everyone.
Have a great break.
Enjoy your break.
Thanks.